And the application of how they've affected my life now. I've got enough credits where I'm a, I'll be going into my technically my first semester of my junior year when I go back this in next week with all of the credits. So I mean just truly like an unbelievable and unforgettable experience.
Marissa Van Ormer wasn't able to join us tonight, but she did provide a video testimonial for us.
Hello, I'm Mrs. Van Ormer. I'm a freshman at Boston College, major in unified psychology development, my major is psychology, and that's only two classes. I'm a recent PhD grad, class of 2023, and a recent community graduate. Actually, the youngest ever community graduate, getting out of my high school debt, which is more than $9,000. Well, yeah, I'm close to your art and music degree, so I'm used to a lot of them. And along the way, we took a whole lot of CTEs on our identity process, and that's what we're talking about. So, Marissa, before I go, I do just believe that each class is prepared well for college. The fourth grade was rigorous, it required enhancement, it required work that went up along the way. And how to kind of step foot my college, before I started applying to colleges, really helped me, looking back, as a past professor, having the knowledge of what the best respects, having the knowledge of the workload, at least some of the workload that college really is. So I'm really grateful to be here today, and to be in the public. Also, I've had one lesson at the college education process. It's difficult, since I did it last year ago, but ultimately, I do believe that with your class learning, it helps. A lot of kids, especially if you're a student, everyone gets good grades, everyone does the sports, everyone gets awards, everyone is in clubs, like, it's very easy to find out. And being able to say, oh, I was a sniper, I was a shooter, I was a refugee, I was a radical, I have my stuff, I have my studies, I have a whole lot of credit in my wallet. That's true, and I'm really grateful again for being able to have that and be able to have the work that I do. Also, if you're not even going to college, totally awesome. It's fine. Honestly, like, I was a radical, I could have walked out of my dormitory desk and gotten a job because I have that reputation and I have this position, and it's a world heritage and same. And then it's all having that very special time, that's another thing about it, actually, I have to. So, but I'm just glad to see that they can finally just be able to tell me when I'm at the next one. But, yeah, again, I'm grateful. So, thank you.
Before we invite our guest speakers up, we want to share a motion video.
On mute the other account. On mute this computer.
The pathway, we walk through different stages, and that is where we want to come test my stage in our personal college.
I consider associates degree in school or through a loaned program to complete their education as a college student significantly reducing college tuition costs.
The college application processes, like, having that, like, I don't think anybody's going to do, like, having that opportunity, having that, even if it's on our, like, early of the 20th, it's in different schools, and really helps us then try to get this. I started a year and a half after.
What we would only promote is means to give them courses that satisfy the requirements for their high school enrollment and sign of community, who can transfer them with their credits to colleges and universities across the country. The loaned courses are greatest and exciting, but we believe that she will have skills that are superior to the field that we apply. So, please, do you? I believe these people did better than the thousands of students, because they have the means of earning, of earning exit opportunities. Perhaps even more beneficial if they do this in the environment, they're already helping them.
The real world happens in person. I feel that you guys are not writing an assignment, you're not like this audience, they're like arguing, searching, and reading and writing, they know that there is a perfect path, constantly and continuously improving.
The loaned courses, in partnership with Gulf University and Southern Illinois State University. We are excited to extend our current program, including the partnership with State University.
I'm still trying to determine what I've done, but I feel like I'm still, and I'm ready to, like, think the career world.
The actions that we're using, something we're seeking, comes that has another pathway for you, in the college and career, and the senior and junior, who can learn the good intentions that you're beginning to acquire. And the work first, graduation, and start being a new age, like, college means continuing to educate, challenge, and inspire each individual to itself, and to contribute to the number of society, and whatever path we choose.
The workload is seeing really makes, for college, it's going to be like reality already, essentially, I mean, so, not the goals, how, like, you're going to decide about the workload. It helps me with those study habits and all the habits that we develop to produce the work all the time. They know that their college plays a role, learning something, actually, if you're 15 days, like, changing, change everything. They know to go to school, and are about 30, 30 under, about two years, essentially, completing, is something that we would often do in college, that's up.
I just, I think it's amazing how, with such small schools, yet we offer all these classes and education, so we can use it to be very, very, very important, not just be a counselor or advisor, maybe at least not, but we're a physician.
I'm keenly willing to accelerate the education to the path to your future success. So, if you're still a counselor, I'm really willing to help the people who need that path as much as I can.
Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Dan Cochiola and Sue Bonsky.
I'm just going to start with, isn't this the place we want to be, right? The vision that Sue and I and Jeff Kitching at Advance has talked about was the idea of providing every student in Northwest Connecticut, Connecticut, with the kind of opportunities that Kylie and Marissa have. That's the idea, to scale the opportunity for students to get more depth, more breadth in opportunities for post-secondary. And frame it around the idea of workforce to tap into real opportunities irrespective of the choices they make. And I think, I think Marissa hit it on the head with what she said there. So, this is the place to be, and we're so grateful to be here. How do I shift slides? Oh, great, thank you.
We do want to, if we skip that slide, but we also want to thank Superintendent Cass and Jen for being such an integral part of our process, Christina as well. It's been a great team since the very beginning. Thomason has really embraced this idea, you're already living it. I have goosebumps from those presentations, your students are phenomenal, you should be so proud of what you've already started, you have such a great foundation. We want to come and just enhance what you're doing and build upon it and get some more students to go to class about moving forward with, I think it was Jonathan who said, you know, I want to do something that really interests me. And, you know, we want something that really gets your kids jazz and getting them involved and wanting to come to school, but also wanting to get out there and feeling like they are prepared, just like Marissa and Kylie were just saying, regardless of where they end up. So, they get that foundation in a place where they're really comfortable, at the high school. And that's a great place to start. So, many thanks to everyone here and for the board, we got to meet some board members previously, so thank you for allowing us to come again to speak with the board. We can go ahead to the next slide.
So, we exist to provide customized post-secondary educational opportunities for students at college while they're in high school. And the idea that Sue just hit on, the support structures, the familiarity, what happens here in school is, is part of what makes that opportunity successful. We're not sending students out into the world, that's, we're wrapping supports around them while they take these extraordinarily challenging opportunities.
Yeah, we're, we're not a magnet program, we want to work with districts, students stay your own even though they travel to the regional learning center in Torrington or to CT State Northwestern, we provide the transportation, it's free. Our executive director, as Dan was saying, Jeff Kitching, truly believes in that, providing the transportation and not having a tuition cost to us, to what we believe is near and dear to our hearts. We can go to the next slide. As a former superintendent, we used to work tirelessly to try and figure out how we could bring together everyone, how we could bring together school districts, higher education for dual enrollment classes, and local businesses, healthcare, all those organizations. But it's very difficult, we had little slices, and you have it going on here at Thomason, a lot of other districts don't have the full programs that you have and the range of offerings. But now, at Advance is setting aside time, people, Dan and I, to really bring this together. So we are the glue, we're the bridge, the liaison, next slide. So, in order to, these are our goals, we are increasing dual enrollment, as I said before, really enhancing those offerings, building the capacity of your staff. Brandon, who was honored this evening, perfect timing, it's awesome, who's already reached out to us, who wants to enhance his abilities and to be able to offer those dual enrollment classes right here at Thomason High School. And then, we will work with Jen and Christina and the rest of your staff to provide connections so that we can provide pre-apprenticeships, internships, maybe just tours of different businesses that are local and close by, so students can decide what they'd like to do. Maybe they don't know yet, but it, once they see it, once they experience it, once it takes some of those courses, then they get excited, and it's like, hey, that's really what I want to do. It touches something, Kylie or Marissa said, I think it was Marissa saying, oh, that's what I really wanted to do. She's sitting in the audience and like, you know, lights go off, you know, it gives that feeling in the pit of her stomach, I love that. And then the four pathways, manufacturing, education, healthcare, public safety, focusing on manufacturing, education, the first, the first year, which would be 24, 25, and then expanded opportunities in 25, 26, and healthcare and public safety. We can go ahead.
So, the first avenue is career certificates, develop specialized skills for in-demand fields, on-the-job training through internships, leads directly to skilled trades, and these are in-demand fields, starting at or above salary. Certificates is a credential that a student enters the workforce, leaves high school with in their pocket, it's a huge win.
We, and we heard that from the students.
Yep. Go ahead. Oh, good. And the associate degree pathway, each one of our pathways is stackable in that students can earn certificates on their way to an associate's, and if they get to the associate's grade, and if they don't, they still walk away with those credentials. And so, obviously, what we heard in the videos today, graduate high school, two years of college already completed, at no cost. That's the key. Enter workforce at high graduation or turn it into selective college admissions or college admissions at a greatly reduced cost. It's a win and opportunity for kids. So, in manufacturing, I just, we're getting a little into weeds here, but I want to jump in as fast as I can. We have five tiers, all right? Students can enter at any one of these, you know, grades nine through 12, the CAD user certificate, it's three classes. A 12th grader could enter it next year and graduate high school with the certificate. A 9th grader could enter it and stack following tiers onto it later. That user certificate, get your foot in the door in industry, students still going to need some training, but at least they're talking the language of industry. The CAD mechanical certificate, more intensive in industry, they're going to be able to have some independence and have more opportunity and jobs, and jobs at more competitive salaries. Mechatronics certificate, significantly demanding certificate that really talks about AI, robotics, automation, it's what's called Industry 4.0. The idea of industry is really automating, but what work will people be doing around that automation? Tiers four and five are both associate degrees, the technology-entered area associate could give us more brandings, because CTE teachers are in demand, and this is the first two years of that four-year program at Central Connecticut. The manufacturing engineering associate degree is identical to tier four, except it has more demanding math, which really leads to the associate degree in manufacturing engineering. Again, kids could parlay that directly to the workforce or parlay it to college.
So similar with the manufacturing, we can go to the next slide, the education tiers mimic this, so they are once again stackable if students just want to get the child development associate's and work in childcare centers, they take three classes and they do work hours so that they're working with students. And then, in tier two, that's the early childhood education certificate, and that's for a paraprofessional. They take all the same classes that they would take in the child development associate's, and then they would add those other five classes so that they are prepared to take the parapro and then go into a school district to actually become a paraprofessional. And then we get to tier three, which is the associate's degree at the various areas in terms of a pre-K or a grades of one through six, or a grade seven through 12. So, that's the full loan associates, they're taking their courses while they're at the high school, and then they are actually moving into a four-year program. So, the following year, and I mentioned this earlier, in 24, 25, we're just offering the most basic of classes, that would be the CNA, the EMT, either the certified nursing associate or that emergency certificate, so you can, like, first aid, CPR, basic courses. In that 25, 26, we would actually have a full loan component that's developed out so that we can have certifications in those areas within the high school program.
So, our mission is to serve our districts and their talents. I think we work for you, that's ultimately who we are. So, in working with Francine and Jen and the leadership team, Christina, at the high school, over these last six months, we, we've tried to be able to figure out how to deliver something that's going to meet your needs in congruence with what extraordinary things you already have, and meet them at the level that you want them met. And so, that's who we are. I think developing sustainable long-term programming, especially around workforce learning, you know, is going to have an impact in Northwest Connecticut, and that's ultimately our goal, right? It's, at the end of the day, it's about sustaining the economic advantage and vitality of our communities. And that's who we are and what we want to do with you, and that's why we came to share this with you tonight. I think we have a plan that can really impact the students at Thomason, the students of the region, and we're so excited to be here because you guys get this.
And the last slide is how Jen was able to begin, clear, we're beginning and ending with students, which is always the very best thing, right, near and dear to our hearts, what we're all about. So, beautiful pictures of Marissa and Kylie at both graduations, awesome, they're, they're shining models for what we're talking about here this evening. So, thank you, thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Happy to answer any questions.
I just have a few questions, I don't think these are working.
I don't think they're working either.
We can hear you.
Well, they're, I meant for people at home that are watching the meeting. So, the videos, will they be able to be sent to the board members that couldn't hear them?
So, the intention was tomorrow morning to send the video out to all parents through Parent Square, send the link. Right now, it's up on YouTube, but the, it's, it's not, it's unlisted. So, we were going to send that out if Jen blessed it for me, but I haven't had that conversation yet, so I kind of just boxed her in.
I guess I just had questions about, or clarification on how this is different than what we're already doing here at Thomason High School. Now, first aid and CPR, I saw that on there in the CNA course, we were already offering the CNA course, first aid and CPR is free for our seniors through Thomason Ambulance. So, is it, it, they're just going to be a liaison now for these programs, and what is the cost to the district?
Well, there's zero cost, first of all, zero cost. But, there are things that we already do that other districts don't do, that they will capitalize on and organize so that, for example, when they mentioned Brandon, when they were talking about Mr. Lynn, if he pursues whatever certifications he needs to teach, say, one of the manufacturing courses, he would be here doing that, but he would be able to do it for their program so other kids from other districts could participate, and we wouldn't lose him while he's progressing in, in his studies and broadening his horizons as a teacher. Our CNA program would still be our CNA program, but if it's a program that meets the needs of other districts, they would capitalize on the program that we have already, and our CNA, you know, Cook Willow would be, you know, our teacher would be, become their teacher potentially, and other students from other districts could potentially join our program. It's very fledgling.
Do we get reimbursed for that?
There's, it, there's no cost, so there's, as far as I know, there's no funding for that.
And thank you, and I think that's spot on, and I think one of the wins is, it helps ensure that the program can be offered to your students. There might be, I, I could envision a scenario where there's a course that there's only five or six students who register from, and, and the question is, do we run that this year? Right? These are decisions that, you know, Christina has to make every year, but if we're able to pull in students from other districts, then the answer is yes, we can run that now for our kids. And that kind of collaborative nature, especially, I think what we're hearing is, you know, with some small schools, it's hard to maybe pull enough kids together, but collaboratively, we might be able to help provide the opportunity to do that.
But some of your students may also want to take courses at high schools that are in the region as well, or at the regional learning center. The benefit here is, we're using Brandon as an example, he's becoming duly enrolled certified, so then, the students will be getting college course, college credit while they're also getting high school credit, while they take that one class. So, it is a benefit also.
So, to get back to your question about if we were to have students using our staff, I don't have a, a clear picture on, on that, and I, I don't think there's any compensation coming from at Advance for our staff, because the way that it's supposed to run, for, for it to be neutral cost, you're trying to minimize or eliminate all expenses, so by using people that already exist, that doesn't cost them money in hiring staff, but it also doesn't cost us money to transport our children to someone else who exists down the road. I mean, literally, physically down the road, not down the road in the future, figuratively.
Right, the next time.
Yep.
It's a great question, though, these are a lot of the things that we've been thinking about.
So, if mine's open, it's not. Well, just want to say thanks again for the presentation, I remember at, at our achievement. You guys gave us a very nice and encompassing presentation on the whole program, and we did talk about transportation and that there wouldn't be cost for that. One question I would like to ask, so, it's school to school, even if it's the end of the school day, they get brought back here?
Yeah.
Okay. And I will just add, I was very intrigued by your last presentation, I think the whole concept is great for the kids, I mean, it's something I wish I had, but other than that, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Well, again, we thank you for coming, and this is a great opportunity for our students, and we look forward to working with you. Thanks, Sue. Thank you. And we thank Marissa and Kylie for coming back and sharing their experiences with us so eloquently. Moving forward, we have our student representative report.
I will begin the report of academics. On January 12th, it'll be the senior month for us. On January 15th, it'll be middle school. January 23rd, the end of the second quarter, everyone I spoke to is excited for the beginning of the second semester. Seniors applying for early action and early decision will be expected to either be accepted or rejected during this month or next month.
Home for clubs. After we had our winter break, most clubs are preparing for their end of year, our end of winter activities. Student council has several activities going to be happening. There is an association of schools, elementary leadership conference for the high schoolers to go and serve as leaders for a small group of elementary kids. That will be held tomorrow, the 9th of January. Black Rock and Taylor School are still in need for high school mentors for their students, and most clubs had their fundraisers before break, but they're still looking for people to join at any time. For athletics, the girls' basketball team has a record of six wins and one loss. The boys' basketball team has a record of two wins and four losses. Indoor track practices almost every day after school, and they've had a few meets already. And all winter sports are going strong and keeping up with their spirit after we came back from our break, and most games are at night, but try to make it.
For special events, it'll be an, there was an all-star assembly on January 4th. January 15th, which Martin was their junior guy. And on January 12th, it will be a CAS leadership conference for students in seventh and eighth grade. That concludes their report.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Okay. For my report, the progress report is as presented, and from at Advance, I just wanted to let you know that the executive director, Dr. Jeff Kitching, will be retiring at the end of the school year in June, so the board of directors is going to be looking for a replacement as we go forward this year. And that concludes my report. My report begins with correspondence, there are 10 listed there for your review. I have no correspondence from any of the following four groups that are listed on the agenda, but I do have two correspondence from the State Department of Education, both being newsletters. We don't have any general reports this month, but we do have our administrator reports, and we have a homeschooling report, or specifically a notice of homeschooling. And we have in addition to our enrollment report this month, instead of our typical enrollment report, we also have a projection. So every so many months, we get the opportunity to have a projection on both our special ed and our gen ed students, but then, once a year, we'll get just a special education projection. This is both, this is all-encompassing, all-enrollment across the district and so many years out. And that's done by NESDEC, we're, we're members of that group, and that's part of our membership dues, is that they give us this enrollment projection semiannually. We have no new contracts for this particular agenda, and if you would like to know more about any new grants, we ask that you check the December 2023 business managers' report. There's, there are no fundraisers for this month on this agenda, they are in the business managers' report as well. Under personnel, we have no new hires. However, we have one reassignment, one transfer new assignment, three resignations. one transfer new assignment, three resignations, and one stipend. I ask that the board vote to acknowledge my notification of personnel, specifically the one reassignment, one transfer new assignment, four resignations, and one stipend as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who motion?
Beth.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
We have one employee requesting family medical leave at this time. We have no new interns or student teacher, excuse me, we have one new intern and student teacher from the University of Bridgeport. Haley is with us. We have no field trips that are going out of state, and we have no requests to sell or dispose of books, equipment, or supplies that reach the board's level. That concludes my superintendent's report for this month.
Matt Benomar, I vote to accept and approve the business and financial report and expenditures for policy 3432 and 3433, business non-instructional operations, budget and expense report, annual financial statement as presented for December 2023.
Any questions?
I would like to make a comment that what wasn't on the agenda, what, what was not in the Business Managers Report was comments that were offered at the end of the meeting by our district lead custodian, Spencer Luthy. He brought us up to speed on some of the things that have been going on here as we prepare for our five and 10-year plan. And next month, we hope to have both at the Budget Audit Committee meeting and at this meeting, a presentation of a phenomenal inventory database that's been created by our staff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Matt Benomar, I vote to accept and approve the changes to policy 4117.6 and 4217.6. Personnel certified, non-certified exit interviews be permitted for fast-tracking by two-thirds vote of the members present at the Board of Education meeting, the Board permits a fast-tracking of the policy adoption or amendment. I move that the Policy Committee may oppose amendments to policy 4117.6 and 4217.6. Personnel certified, non-certified exit interviews be permitted for fast-tracking by two-thirds vote of the members present tonight at the Torrington Board of Education meeting, at the Thomaston Board of Education meeting. Two hours to see.
Do you have a second?
I'll second Beth. Still in Torrington.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any discussion on this?
So it's two policies, or 4217 is?
So it's two of the states. Pretty much, we're trying to update our policy to get within state regulations.
Excuse me, Matt. It's one policy with two numbers because it's under personnel. So if it's a 4100, it belongs to certified. If it's a 4200, it belongs to non-certified. So it's for both groups. Sorry. I wanted to, I knew what Beth was asking.
So we were just editing our already existing exit interview form. We're adding the things the state are mandating, and then during the Policy Committee meeting, the Policy Committee wanted to also add, how long have you worked in Thompson Public Schools, and how long have you worked in the position you are vacating? The upper downside to the policy is, we are mandated to give it to the teachers when they exit, but they have no obligation to fill it out and return it to us. But for the state, we don't have any recourse to get it back. So everyone is given it, but frequently, it is not returned filled out.
How are we giving it to employees?
It goes out two ways. It goes out typically by email before they leave, and then if we don't get an answer, we'll send it by mail. We're looking to do a Google form instead, hoping that that might get us more responses, but that hasn't been developed yet. And the changes are mandated by law. So if you, the state wants to start collecting information on teachers in particular, so they want us to collect it for them.
And then they come back to HR or your office?
They come back to HR, to my office, but it goes to HR's desk, and then she'll scan them as soon as she gets them, and they will come to you directly, immediately, as opposed to on the agenda, so that you get them unredacted, so you could see what it really says.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, we are voting to fast-track. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Matt Benomar, I vote to accept and approve the changes to policy 4117.6 and 4217.6. Personnel certified, non-certified exit interviews as amended during today's Policy Committee meeting.
My second.
You've got one. Two hours to see.
Any questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Thank you.
All right. And then just updating with the rest of the Policy Committee meeting. We had three different presentations today. We had one from Mr. Vanel about instituting a policy for NRCAM, which we'd like to move to a discussion item next meeting. And then we also went over, Ms. Kingsbury presented us about the summer school and the adaption she wanted to make to that policy, which we'll also be moving to a discussion item.
First read.
First read.
Both of those items to first reads next month.
And the, oh, the standing committee. So as our policy currently writes, our treasurer is the committee chair for the Budget Audit Committee, and we want to put in the policy that the vice chair is the chairperson of the Policy Committee meeting, hopefully with more than two hours to see. And then we also like to move, we had first reads on filling vacancies, and the office of the vice chair person, which we like to move to second reads for next month. And then second reads, we went over school fundraisers and posting students' work and photographs. We'd like to move them to action items for next month, the vote on the meeting. And that's it from the Policy Committee meeting.
Did anybody have any questions regarding those other policies? Okay. Thank you. If I could have a motion to move into executive session?
Matt Benomar, I vote to enter into executive session for the purposes of a mid-year evaluation meeting of the superintendent based on the effectiveness of her leadership and implementation and achievement of district goals, and for the purpose of leadership, the team's self-assessment based on the effectiveness of their leadership and the implementation and achievement of board goals.
My second.
Invite the superintendent.
I would like to invite Superintendent Francine.
My second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. The motion carries. And we thank you all for coming, and I apologize to those at home who were unable to hear us clearly.